Good evening, everybody. So on behalf of the board, we apologize for being a little late, but it's really good to see you all here. Welcome to the April 11th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then the next item on the agenda is introduction of tenure teachers.
Well, board, this is a big deal.
Yes.
And once a year, we honor and you indeed do tenure teachers. And in a minute, I'm going to explain exactly what this means. But first of all, to all of our teachers and department chairs who are involved in the program tonight, let me give you the instructions and then we'll hope we can kind of follow them. The department chair, when you're introducing the tenure teacher in your department, please have the person come forward at that time so we actually can see who's being honored and spoken about as you speak. And then the first four departments, there is one person in each of them. So CTE in English and History and IIT. After you've been introduced and that chairperson steps aside, just stay over there next to the windows for a few minutes because here comes the next part. And then after that, we'll just do it by department. But after you've been introduced and honored, then we're actually going to have you walk around this little horseshoe here so the board can greet and honor you. Probably either a nod, possibly a fist bump or an elbow would be just fine, whatever your comfort level is. And when you get to the board president, we have our highly sought after ETHS pins. Yes, we do buy them by the gross, but it's the symbolism that's far more important than what we pay for the pins. And so I hope that it will be something that you will be able to keep somewhere and just remind yourself that that is representative of the night that you were granted your tenure. But before we kick it off, let me just say a few words about what tenure means to everybody in attendance and certainly to our staff members who are being honored tonight. Tenure is not unique to ETHS. Nearly every state in the Union has some kind of a tenure process. And it basically is a process that after serving a certain amount of probationary years, if and when you have proven yourself as somebody that the district really wants to keep on a continuing basis, then you're offered tenure. In our case, this is state of Illinois, after four years, when the district deems that that is really something we want to do, you are indeed offered tenure. Now, I want to stress how important that is because we are making a commitment to you, if you so choose, for the rest of your career in education, for the rest of your career. Some of you will find some other career opportunities for other reasons, but the majority of you will probably serve here at ETHS throughout your career. And so imagine what a big deal it is when a district wants to invest in you and make that commitment to you for the rest of your career. But even though every school district in the state of Illinois follows the same tenure process, you're not just being offered tenure, you're being offered tenure at Evanston Township High School, and that's a really big deal. This is the top of the career ladder, period. And the fact that you are succeeding here in, by the way, a school that is very difficult and very challenging. And I've worked in six districts and I've been a superintendent in four, and I won't hesitate to say to anybody, this is the most challenging and the most rewarding. Because with the challenges that come with being able to succeed at Evanston Township High School comes the greatest rewards any professional in education could ever hope for. Those of you being tenured tonight, you know that. You know the rewards, and you know it's hard work. But you know that you have been here now for four years and you have really come to understand this school, to understand our students, to understand what we stand for, and to understand that you feel that this is where you belong. I have said it many times, not all professional educators belong at Evanston Township High School. It's not for them. What we have in terms of our racial and socioeconomic and international diversity is not typical. And what we have in a community that believes in and places the highest value on education is simply not true everywhere else. Our taxpayers pay a lot of money to educate the children in this high school, but they do it, not that we don't all complain about our property taxes, but they do it willingly because this community makes education its top priority. And it's been true for generations, and it's true today. So to each of you who's being offered tenure tonight, I say to you, you have proved yourself and you can now spend your career continuing to get better and better, to hone those relationships with your colleagues and with students. And you can really spend time making a difference in the lives of hundreds upon hundreds of young people, not only in the last four years, but in the coming years. Congratulations. And now, I'm going to turn this, I'm going to turn this over to Scott Bramley. Dr. Bramley is our Director of Human Resources. He's going to kind of orchestrate this. Again, the first four departments will have you do it. Oh, and I want to repeat, and then we'll help guide you, and then you'll come around. I didn't want anybody to have to walk alone. And you'll come around and give the nods and get your pin, and then we'll go on to the next department chair. So Scott, you're on.
Well, thank you, everyone. This is one of the rare occasions which I get to speak about personnel at open sessions, so extremely excited and honored to be able to present our teachers who are being honored with tenure this evening. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for your service to our students and our community. We cannot do any of this without you, and we have a fantastic group of teachers earning honor, this honor this evening. So I won't speak much tonight. Dr. Witherspoon's last tenure board meeting, so I'm going to help him, he's going to help us orchestrate the honor through meeting with the board and getting your pin. But we'll start off, we'll go in alphabetical order of department. And so we'll start with Career and Technical Education with Dr. Gates, and I believe she is going to be reading for English as well. And then as Dr. Witherspoon said, if our history colleagues and our IIT colleagues could come up as well, and then you'll be able to stay along the windows here before you make your way through to the board. So thank you so much, and we have the honor tonight of hearing about the great work that you do. Only a snippet, we'd be here for another week or so if we heard everything, but a minute or two of the wonderful work that our teachers do every day on behalf of our students. And this group did it during two years of a global pandemic, so keep that in mind.
You ready? Okay. Good evening, hi, everyone. This is also my last chance to do this, so Kevin is probably like, I don't know, have I done this maybe 15 times? So Kevin, you are one of our wonderful CTE teachers. So what I want to say about Kevin, first of all, Kevin demonstrates a deep, and I mean really deep, and very wide knowledge of every single area in applied technology. He effortlessly grasps the content of every course from intro to engineering design and project lead the way, auto maintenance, metal sculpture, personal finance, engineering design thinking, whatever we ask Kevin to teach in applied technology, he's really amazing. He is a brilliant technician himself, and he shares that with our students. He does find a way to engage students, taking his extensive content knowledge, engaging them using innovative teaching techniques and examples from real life, which he has many to share with them, that really can bring something to life for students, so we really appreciate that. His students become knowledgeable about the subject matter, and in many cases, they become experts themselves, and that's really what we're all about. Thirdly, I just want to say that Kevin is a wonderful member of our CTE department. He is a team player. He works so well with everyone in our department, and especially during these stressful times, that's been really so wonderful. So thank you, Kevin. He's always willing to support his colleagues, not only in the department but across the school. So congratulations, Kevin. Okay, I also have to fill in for Ms. Jones. Simone is not here, she wasn't able to be here, so Monica, would you come up? Hi, Monica.
Hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Hopefully you knew I was doing this.
I did, yes.
Okay, good. Surprise. Okay, so this is, these are Simone's words about you. Monica Lani is a thoughtful, dedicated teacher whose classroom is student-centered and filled with creative energy. While she has a solid handle on student engagement through meticulous planning and establishing positive relationships, she continues to be open to feedback and is willing to reflect on her role as a professional educator. During Ms. Lani's first year of teaching here at ETHS, she jumped right in sharing her love of and expertise in theater by directing the freshman play. That's like amazing, so thank you for doing that. Her love of the theater is second only to the care that she has for each of our students. Over the years, she has met with me regularly to make sure that she is not inadvertently contributing to the opportunity gap imposed on our students of color. She has continued to question, reflect, and revise her practice as she grows as an educator. It has been a pleasure working with and witnessing the tremendous growth of such a passionate teacher. Congratulations, Monica. Who's next? Oh, you're welcome. I don't know who's next.
Next would be Ms. Parker from History.
I'm smiling with my eyes.
Me too.
Well, good evening, distinguished board members. It's my pleasure to present to you Ms. Deanna Duffy, and no relation to Kevin Duffy, who's also getting tenure this evening. I'm the Chair of the History and Social Science Department, and as you know, my department has a reputation for having some wonderful teachers who demonstrate care and concern for their students. And so when I first met Ms. Duffy, four years ago, when she came to interview for a faculty position here, I was instantly warmed by her cheerfulness. Her personality was always positive and caring, even throughout the interview. I spent a lot of time working with my new teachers. We met every week for the first full semester of her time here at ETHS. And through that time, I've gotten a chance to know her, and it has been my pleasure to know her. She has emerged as a wonderful teacher. In fact, I call her the quintessential teacher of freshmen. Those of you who know about our freshman humanities program, it's a wonderful program, but it's not for every teacher here at ETHS. And she uses her superpowers of positivity, care, and joy to make sure that the newest wild kids at ETHS feel welcome and supported every single year. And that's a challenge. She's had some challenging freshmen to deal with. So I'm thrilled to have her as a member of our department and a member of our ETHS community. So with that, I present to you Ms. Deanna Duffy.
Next is Mr. Chan with Instructional Technology, and then Mr. Leeforth is up on deck after that, after they pass through with the board.
All right, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Rabina Button. I remember the first time I observed the lesson taught by Ms. Button. She joined ETHS mid-year 2019 during a rather tumultuous time in our department. Rabina immediately provided stability and energy to the team. I was in awe of how much enthusiasm she brought to something as simple as a database search. Whether it was her topic choice or her vibrant personality, one could tell that students were always on the edge of their seats, wondering what Ms. Button was going to say next. Usually involved some sort of pun on her last name, like, hey, everyone, click on the share button, get it, Ms. Button? She would do that, like the knee slapper. Oh, so good, so good. Ms. Button was instrumental in developing and reinforcing the use of lib guides at ETHS. These resource documents have grown to be extremely useful for teachers and students when their library needs extend back to the classroom or at home. This was particularly true during remote learning, as the lib guides contain not only links to important items, but also screencast tutorials that she created that could be viewed again and again as needed, just by pressing the play button. Rabina has continued to pursue, hey, there you go. Rabina has continued to pursue and work with teachers and their classes on innovative and engaging lessons such as 3D printing, book trailers, and then this year, starting with blocksels. The idea of makerspace projects continues to be a popular one in education, and Ms. Button has applied her previous knowledge and experience to her new environment at ETHS. She strives to connect with teachers in subject areas underrepresented in library visits. To this effect, Ms. Button has broadened the reach of the ETHS libraries and the entire school benefits as a result. She certainly seems to know which buttons to press. All right. Most recently, Rabina has explored opportunities to get involved outside in clubs and activities, including the Mina Summit and our newly formed Student Advisory Board in the library. One of Rabina's colleagues commented, "Working with Rabina this past year has been amazing." Rabina listens to our students and supports individuals to help them achieve their goals. She's always willing to learn and get to know our student population here at ETHS. Rabina is very involved in providing innovative learning opportunities for all of our students. Her idea to bring blocksels and 3D printing to our classes that utilize the libraries has been a great resource, and many continue to benefit from. I think it's safe to say that those who have worked with Ms. Button can acknowledge how hard of a worker she is. Rabina is a go-getter. She's approachable, friendly to students, and she does her work with a smile. Also, through her math, she smiles with her eyes. As she mentioned during a lesson once, how about this one? It's like buttons. You'll never forget my name now, right? I'm guessing those here tonight will remember her as well, and I encourage the teachers here to seek Rabina out in the ETHS libraries. We are very fortunate to have amongst our faculty Ms. Rabina Button.
All right, let's try it. Come on around the horseshoe.
Which way do we start?
This way?
Yep. Such fun. I know it. That's what I really want. Oh, thank you.
Get your pin.
Dump pin.
Shelly's first.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm standing here with 13.5135% of my faculty, but we can round that to 13 and a half if you want. But I have five teachers here with me tonight, so congratulations to all of you, and I will spend two minutes talking about each one of them. First is Shelly Bonner. Shelly came to us from Dayton Early College Academy after receiving her bachelor's from the University of Dayton in mathematics and adolescent to young adult education and a minor in English. Shelly's been very involved in our ETHS community since arriving four years ago. She currently teaches our precalculus class and also teaches AP Statistics. She's helped to accelerate the growth of our statistics program to next year having a team of five teachers and eight sections. She also serves as the course leader of the stats team. Some highlights about Shelly are her desire for every student to be successful, the ability to connect with students, and her ability to build connections between math and the real world. Her mentor, Blair Rose Yoder, said, "Shelly's an awesome colleague. She's opened the door and made her classroom an inviting space for colleagues to gather now that the use of the math department is limited. I personally appreciated the friendship and camaraderie that the space afforded me in this challenging school year." Shelly's a leader of a growing AP Statistics team that now has up to five teachers, including two women. Word on the street is that she's been invaluable in keeping that team organized and on the same page. I'm grateful for all that Shelly brings to our department. Shelly clearly has a bright future ahead of her, and I'm excited to see how she'll continue to have a positive impact on the lives of our students. Please join me in congratulating Shelly Bonner. Yeah, you're up. It's a pleasure and privilege to recommend Ivana Chivela for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Ivana came to us from Warren Township High School after earning her Bachelor of Science in Teaching of Mathematics with a minor in Germanic Studies. She's been very active at ETHS. She helped to transition our geometry course to Pathway to Honors, and will assist as we transition to Algebra II next year as well. She's an energetic emcee for our Geometry Bridge Building Contest and is a member of our Geometry Project Committee. She's a department expert on creating breakout boxes for her math lessons. She recently completed her Master's in Education with an Yale endorsement and has also become a mom to Vize, who's in the back. Ah, Ivana the mom. Ivana currently teaches Geometry II Algebra and also teaches Geometry and Algebra II Support. A highlight about Ivana is her energy, humor, and enthusiasm. She's the ability to connect with people instantly. She and I have frequently bonded over superheroes or the Croatian national soccer team. Her mentor, Jamie Clifton, says, "Ivana's great and very dedicated to her students. She cares about each one and supports them well as they become better mathematicians." Ivana clearly has a bright future ahead of her at ETHS. Please join me in congratulating Ivana Chivela. Sarah. It's a pleasure to introduce Sarah Gursaskey for tenure at ETHS. Sarah came to us from Lakes Community High School after getting her bachelor's in math at the University of Iowa. Sarah's been very involved as well since coming to ETHS. She's been on five different course teams in four years. Who did that to you? Next year, she'll join her sixth course team as she develops and leads our brand-new, exciting data science course. She's been a math team coach during her time with us at the junior level, and she currently is in her master's program for Curriculum Studies and Teacher Leadership and will graduate this June. Sarah currently teaches Geometry and Geometry Support, BC Calculus, Precalculus Honors, and serves as our Precalculus Honors Course Lead. Some highlights about Sarah are the family atmosphere she creates in her classroom. Anyone visiting her room feels right at home. She can also hold her students to high expectations. She's not afraid to use her creativity to innovate in the classroom. Her mentor, Avni Kondar, states, "Sarah's a wonderful addition to our math department. Having worked closely with Sarah during the last four years, I can say for a fact that her lessons are thoughtful and engaging. She knows her students and content, both inside and out. Sarah's not afraid to take risks and is always game to try something new in her classroom. She's a great collaborator, collaborator, and brings both knowledge and creativity to the table. Even though I had the privilege of being Sarah's mentor, I have learned at least as much from Sarah as she may have learned from me. Please join me in congratulating Sarah Gursaskey." It's my pleasure to introduce Ilma Lodi for tenure at ETHS. Ilma came to us from the Illinois Institute of Technology, earning a Bachelor of Science in Biomedical Engineering and Certification in Secondary Education Mathematics. Before starting teaching, she was a data processor and analyst, and was also a project engineer who worked on developing a device that was picked up by Medline Industries. Ilma's been very active during her time with us. She's receiving tenure after just three years at ETHS. She's one of our math department affinity group facilitators, leading our non-black people of color space. She's the eldest sister of six. Hello to everyone watching home and to the favorite back there, is that what I heard? Okay. And according to her department chair, is a bona fide TikTok superstar. Did you put that in there? She is. She's nearly completed her master's program for Global Education and also teaches a course on educational justice at Northwestern. Her favorite candy is Twizzlers, and speaking of favorites, Ilma, the rumor's true. Got it? Ilma currently teaches precalculus and her Algebra and Entrepreneurship course. Some highlights from Ilma are she's gifted at allowing every student's identity to shine in her classroom and providing a true sense of belonging and love, paired with a genuine enthusiasm for the mathematics. Her mentor, Niva Curry, states, "Ilma's a dedicated teacher who cares deeply about the students she works with. She spends endless hours making sure that she makes positive connections with all of her students, reaching out to help each one. Her positive spirit is a wonderful addition to our math department. Please join me in congratulating Ilma Lodi." It's hard to do it in two minutes here. It's my pleasure to introduce Susan Ramirez for tenure at ETHS. Susan came to us from the University of Missouri after earning her Bachelor of Science in Education and Math and a minor in Spanish with a multicultural certificate. Susan has also been very involved during her time with us. She's designed and implemented our One Algebra and Coding Pilot and took part in professional development to increase her knowledge around coding. She's on the Latinx Summit Staff Planning Committee. She currently is finishing her Master's in Global Studies in Education and will graduate this summer. She was chosen as most likely to be mistaken for a student for last year's yearbook. And she is one of our math department affinity group facilitators, leading our anti-racist white affinity reading group. She also plans to be a coach on our math team next year. Susan currently teaches One Algebra and Coding and Precalculus, where she serves as the course leader. A highlight of Susan is her ability to collaborate with others and her work to build these same skills in her students. Her mentor, Corey Gilroy, said, "Since our first meeting in the summer of 2018 through today, and I anticipate for many years to come, Susan has been a wonderfully reflective, deeply caring professional who generously shares her time, her skills, her perspective, and eagerly embraces the work of learning and growing. She makes our department better, and I count myself lucky to be able to work directly with her." Please join me in congratulating Susan Ramirez.
Next up, we have Physical Education. Ms. Levitino.
Okay. Okay, good evening. Okay, good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Chris Tomato. Chris comes to us from Northeastern University. While finishing his teaching degree, he worked as a sub cadre for three years and completed his student teaching here at ETHS. Chris currently teaches our freshman boys PE and sports-specific training class. At the freshman level, he instructs his students on the fundamentals of physical fitness and exposes them to the structure of physical education here at ETHS. In the sports-specific training course, Chris was essential with the creation and implementation of this new curriculum. He co-created a course designed specifically to provide differentiated instruction to our elite student athletes to meet their individual fitness and performance goals. He helped expand SST lessons and curriculum in an effort to improve the communication between the athletic coaches and the physical education staff. With his coaching background, Chris brought a unique level of enthusiasm, motivation, and passion for our student athletes and their success within this course. Chris is extremely reflective upon his own teaching. Chris is extremely reflective upon his own teaching. He welcomes feedback and consistently reshapes the way he teaches his students. He effectively analyzes his lessons, applies constructive comments, and then utilizes new teaching strategies. He has taken on the challenge of implementing mindfulness and breathing techniques into his daily lessons to normalize the practice and skills necessary to prioritize our students' mental health. He has made great strides to show students the importance of connecting social and emotional well-being to athletic performance and lifelong wellness. It is clear that the lessons and skills his student athletes are learning reach beyond the field and can be extended into their everyday lives. Outside of his daily obligations as a teacher, Chris has been able to extend his knowledge and passion to athletics. He has eight years of experience coaching various levels of baseball that range from sophomore, JV, and varsity, all here at ETHS. After school, Chris can be found in the weight room instructing and motivating his athletes through their individual workouts. For the past four years, he has taken the lead on running the ETHS Baseball Strength and Conditioning Program. In all of these roles and experiences, Chris has been able to build strong relationships with his students and athletes while demonstrating the values of lifelong wellness. He's a tremendous role model, and he consistently exhibits high levels of motivation and passion in all of his interactions with students, athletes, and colleagues. To say that he is appreciated and respected is an understatement. It is my pleasure to introduce and congratulate Chris Tomato.
Okay. Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Sarah Mayo. Sarah came to us from Rockford University after attending DePaul University for her undergraduate. She completed her student teaching here at ETHS and then joined our PE family. Sarah is currently our lead teacher for Fusion PE, Fusion Fitness PE, and also an integral part of the Strength and Conditioning and Sports Specific Training Programs. Sarah's background as a certified personal trainer has been a fundamental asset as she has transformed various course curriculums, most specifically our Fusion Fitness class. Sarah undertook the challenge of designing a new scope and sequence for this course that not only incorporated the state-required physical fitness standards but also infused numerous wellness initiatives. The robust and innovative curriculum focused on student-centered lessons, peer teaching projects, and authentic assessments that hold high expectations and thrive on student voice. The mission statement of the PE department is to help make the connection between classroom activities and lifelong wellness. Sarah excels at meeting this mission. In all aspects of her professional practice, she establishes a culture and environment for learning by managing classroom procedures and routines, communicating effectively with students, and associating lessons to lifelong wellness. Sarah has built a classroom environment that supports student growth, builds curiosity, and focuses on real-life application of skills and content. Sarah's a teacher that thrives on reflection and is always open to feedback. This willingness to constantly grow and improve as a teacher directly benefits all of her students. The advancements that she has made since joining our PE department has led to exponential growth in her classes and her profession. Sarah's work ethic and commitment to excellence has been evident in all of her interactions and collaborations with her colleagues. Sarah has volunteered to work on several departmental committees such as our PE Resource Center and Physical Activity Student Support Center Task Forces. Sarah brings a fresh perspective and creative approach to all these opportunities as we look to take our PE department to the next level. Outside of her daily obligations teaching, Sarah has served as a freshman girls water polo coach here at ETHS, as well as a volunteer powerlifting coach for our Strength Training Program. She's been an empowering female role model for all of our student athletes. Sarah's a dedicated and passionate leader. She embodies the attributes most important to ETHS. She devotes herself to educating all of their students to the fullest potential, and she's committed to excellence in all aspects of her work. Her level of commitment is rivaled only by her love of working with her students. Sarah has achieved many accomplishments within the first few years of her teaching, and I look forward to the continued impact and success that she will have on our students and community in the years to come. Please join me in congratulating Sarah Mayo. Okay. Brian, last but not least. Okay, it's my pleasure to introduce Brian Murphy. Brian came to us from the Chicago Public School District. Brian is our lead physical education teacher for Strength and Conditioning course, and although this course existed before his arrival, Brian has made it what it is today. The Strength and Conditioning curriculum has been transformed under Brian's leadership. He took the initiative to make necessary changes to restructure the course to incorporate the inclusion of student-centered lessons, authentic assessments, and real-life applications. The advancements he has made has led to exponential growth of the course, and most recently, our Strength and Conditioning course has tripled in enrollment due to the high amount of student interest. Brian has been the key component to the development and evolution of this curriculum. He values our pedagogy and strives to consistently move our department to the next level. His ability to communicate a vision, elicit student buy-in, and execute full-class participation has been integral to the student's success. In addition to Strength and Conditioning, Brian teaches our Healthy Lifestyle Boys class. This class teaches students how to balance health and fitness strategies with an emphasis on social and emotional well-being. Brian developed a curriculum that is highly modified to meet students' individual needs. His ability to incorporate differentiated instruction in a comfortable learning environment creates a safe place for students to learn and grow. Additionally, Brian has been highly active with our special education students. He has co-taught our Special Education PE course, which exposed our special needs students to a large number of activities and highly-modified physical education experiences. Brian has also served as a co-sponsor for our ETHS Special Olympics team. He has dedicated his time to creating additional opportunities for students with special needs to participate and compete in various sports and activities across the CSL. Most recently, Brian has joined the school-wide committee focused on implementing grading-for-equity practices. This teacher-led pilot is focusing on identifying grading practices that are designed to address longstanding concerns within our current system. Brian is motivated by the opportunity to have a positive impact on all of his students' lives. He has transformed how we teach our students to be responsible leaders. His instructional style is outlined by a complete understanding of each student's overall social and emotional well-being and the love of empowering them for lifelong skills. His greatest attribute is relating to each individual student and teaching them in a manner in which they learn. Brian loves what he does, and it shows. He has an unsurpassed gift of meeting students where they are while making lasting connections. I'm super excited to see how Brian will continue to have a positive impact on the lives of our students. Please join me in congratulating Brian Murphy.
All right, next up, we have Terry from Science.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have three tenured teachers to introduce to you tonight. Dr. Marla Isaacs isn't here, and we texted, and I know she's watching at home. Hi, Marla. But I will read my words for her and honor her as well. I'm Terry Sowa Imbo, the Science Department Chair at ETHS, and I am charged up and positive, you will agree with me, that this triad, it gets better, just wait, that this triad of science teachers I present to you today for tenure exemplified the formula of what it means to be a Wildkid. I begin with Mr. Andrew Beck. In all honesty, we knew instantaneously when he started his demo lesson during his interview with a punny science joke and his parents' toaster that he would fit in perfectly with our physics team. We saw potential in his energy to accelerate student thinking, force communication in the language of physicists, and amp up the relevance of physics in students' lives. Over the last four years, Mr. Beck has been in constant motion. His capacity to revise lesson plans each of these last four years to adapt to the different learning environments was amazing. His work over time has increased the trajectory of many students in advanced placement levels of physics. We refer to this as the power of the Beck Effect. Since graduating from the University of Illinois just four years ago, Mr. Beck has really picked up momentum on his teaching journey. He did not resist at the chance to support students on our Science Olympiad team, and he has coached them after school and on the weekends. He collaborates on curriculum with colleagues, reflects on his instruction in student learning, mentors new staff, and has not caused any friction whatsoever. I am hopeful that he will not take on another project till he completes his Master's in Physics Education from the University of Montana this summer. I foresee that he will catapult our physics team into the future, and I look forward to all that lies ahead for Mr. Andrew Beck. I'm going to do Marla next. Next is Dr. Marla Isaacs. I am honored to introduce and celebrate Dr. Marla Isaacs, our newest tenured member of the Biology team. She may be triggering some neural pathways for those of you that have been here for a while. A decade ago, she completed her PhD in Cell and Molecular Biology at Northwestern. She volunteered at ETHS with a group of graduate and PhD students that supported lab work in our Biology classes on a regular basis. I have a theory that that experience catalyzed her desire to go back to school for teaching. She returned to our ETHS habitat to student teach during the winter of 2018 and joined our team officially that fall. Some people might even say it was in her DNA to join our science team. In her classroom, she's created an environment where students grow and thrive on their interconnected journey through life science. Her lessons had a rapid evolution to adapt to the ever-changing landscape of teaching during a pandemic. Lessons mutated and transformed to meet the needs of all her students. Dr. Isaacs has a contagious, in a good way, energy for school spirit. She participates in any and all Spirit Week celebrations, right down to her fingernail designs. She has found her niche in supporting students outside of the class through Black Caucus, Black Student Summits, student activities, and Wildkid Academy. Dr. Marla Isaacs is a vertebrate, I mean vibrant, member of our team. I look forward to observing her in her habitat for years to come. Congratulations, Dr. Isaacs. All right, the final member of this triad is chemistry teacher, Mr. Neil Reimer. He is like a rare earth metal. When you find it, you appreciate its value and hold on to it. Mr. Reimer joined our staff after years of experience in Chicago. He brought the perfect mixture of professional experience, willingness to try new things, and deep immersion in the next-generation science standards. Looking for a solution to build student voice in the chemistry classroom, he has embraced a democratic classroom that centers the student and their learning. He has a positive presence and encourages students to model their thinking, fail forward, and construct meaning together. Periodically, he conducts class meetings to review the roles and responsibilities of the classroom community, and the group collectively makes decisions about the classroom. Mr. Reimer has taken an elemental role in our chemistry curriculum revision process. His leadership in exciting his colleagues has brought a whole new energy level to our chemistry team. They are collectively working to have chemistry reflect the lives of their students and allow them to see the relevance of learning something on the macroscopic level that they can only see in a, to learn something on the microscopic level that they can only see in our macroscopic world. The fusion of Mr. Neil's past experiences with a project towards shifting future pedagogy for the love of chemistry and support of students' identity is a reaction I cannot wait to witness in the near future. I hope I'm not putting too much pressure on him, but I'm confident he can handle the heat. Congratulations, Mr. Neil Reimer. You're the bomb.
I think Ms. Sowa just set the record for puns in an evening. So thank you so much, Terry. Next up is Cynthia and Anthony's, yes, Cynthia and Anthony from Student Services. And then after them will be Ms. Dinafrio from World Languages.
Good evening, I'm Anthony King. I am the Student Services Department Co-Chair, and I'm here to talk about the wonderful Ms. Manera Bolis. And I'm going to go right into what people say about her. From the very first time Manera entered this building as an intern, you could feel her positive energy, and you knew she was special. She's one of the hardest-working and thoughtful people that I know. I remember back when I was asked, "Have you met Manera?" And the talk was, "Oh, she's good." Manera's an outstanding school psychologist who truly cares about supporting and advocating for her students. She always fights for what is needed and is willing to have difficult conversations about change. ETHS is beyond lucky to have Manera here as a school psychologist. Manera is an incredible colleague. She's a true team player who appropriately pushes team members to improve their quality of work in supporting students. Manera's a natural leader and has brought fresh perspective to the Student Services Department. She is determined, trustworthy, and kind. Additionally, she is a fierce advocate for students. Our psychology team would not be complete without her. So I'll share a little bit from my perspective. I saw Manera being a little vulnerable one time. So this was during a baby shower at work. So apparently to her, this was all unexpected. And I thought that because when we brought the baby shower display to her office, she took a breath, and then a sigh, and then a cry. I was like, okay, I think that means she likes everything. After a brief celebration, she got right back to work at her desk. Ms. Bolis also wanted to support students during a lockdown at school while she was very much with child. And I thought about what her experience might have been at that time, and then a supervisor said, "Ms. Bolis, would you please go to your office, close the door, and have a seat somewhere? Your colleagues have been informed that you are practicing self-care at this time." The supervisor then followed up to make sure that the, with the office mates, to make sure that Ms. Bolis had followed that directive. I want to congratulate you, Manera Bolis. I'm very proud to be a part of your journey, and I'd like you all to join me. Put your hands together, please. And next, and next. I want to present to you all Jackie Mansia, the school social worker. So I'm going to change the tempo just a little bit and start with a true story about Jackie Mansia, the social worker. I wrote to Jackie recently at the end of a workday. I said, "Hey, Jackie, do you have 15 seconds to listen to something that will bring you joy and affirmation?" Two minutes later, Jackie wrote back, "Sure." So then I called her, and I said, "Hey, Jackie, I want to be giving a speech at the board meeting on April 11th, and it's a big deal, and I want you to be there." Jackie paused. I'm sure she was thinking, "What about the joy and affirmation?" Then she said, "Well, congratulations. I think I can attend." I said, "Well, be sure that you can attend because the speech that I'm going to be giving is in your honor." Jackie said, "Wait, what?" She probably was multitasking and thought maybe she missed something. Then I told her that what I was talking about is this. Then I told her that what I was talking about is this. So Jackie, here's what they say about you. "Since joining the ETHS family this school year as a new staff member, Jackie provided me with invaluable mentorship and camaraderie. Her focus on equality is evident through her care and support for her students on a daily basis. Her tenure will be one of the most celebrated, will be one of the many celebrations that reflect her hard work, dedication, and learning here at ETHS. Jackie is an amazing colleague. She is always there for you to consult. On numerous occasions, I've gone to Jackie to give her thoughts and to get her ideas on challenging situations. Every time, she makes you feel heard, respected, and supported. Jackie also has a very good sense of humor. She keeps things light when necessary. I'm repeatedly amazed by Jackie's ability to balance warm and genuine care with firm boundaries and professionalism. She's also a safe space for our students, as well as a source of structure and accountability for all of them. Jackie is a skilled social worker, a dedicated educator, and a devoted colleague and loving friend. The ETHS community is a better place because of Jackie, and the Student Services Department is lucky to call Jackie a family member. She was so kind and welcoming to me last year. She's a great colleague to consult with and will always listen and give advice. Jackie, your journey is my journey as well. Congratulations. Everyone put it together again for Jackie.
Good evening. I'm much shorter than he is. My name is Cynthia Fuertan. I'm the co-chair for Student Services, and I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing Nicole Debner tonight. Nicole is a valued member of the Counseling Department whose drive, knowledge, and enthusiasm for working with students is unparalleled. She entered ETHS with exceptional professionalism and skills as a counselor, bringing with her a welcoming demeanor that puts students at ease and invites collaboration. Her colleagues describe her as a natural leader, kind, compassionate, humorous, and all that laugh will get you every time. She's assertive, someone who thinks outside of the box, and a strong advocate for students, families, and our department. Her leadership shines in many ways. Whether she's sharing innovative strategies to improve current processes or finding ways to boost staff morale through the Sunshine Committee, Nikki's efforts never go unnoticed. And we think she's pretty cool because she rides a Harley. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Nicole Debner.
All right, Rachel.
Hi, I'm Rachel Dinafrio. I'm the department chair of World Languages. We are tenuring three of our seven languages here tonight. So really quickly, I just wanted them to say something in their languages for you.
Vielen Dank an allen.
Gracias a todos.
Nieman hao.
So I'm going to start with Eddie Gray, one of our German teachers. So Eddie asked me to write a letter of recommendation earlier this year for our master's program. He came in during AM support kind of sheepishly and said, "Oh, you can take a couple weeks." And I wrote it that day. It was something that I really enjoy doing. The words came really easily to me, just as they did when I sat down to write these remarks. It was something I wanted to do because of who he is and how fortunate we are to have Eddie here with us at ETHS. Eddie is a German teacher, an avid teacher, and an ESL teacher. He has a theater background, which serves him as well as he juggles so many hats and roles. He also directs that play with Monica every year. Eddie is student-centered. He focuses on relationships. He works with our English learners and our avid students. He is a fierce advocate for our marginalized students. He is collaborative, and he's fun. His colleagues share that he goes above and beyond. He is dedicated to creating opportunities for students. He brings students and adults together. He is energetic, committed, enthusiastic, and someone that builds morale. He has been referred to as the rock star leader of the Social Committee, and people describe themselves to be lucky to work with him. Please join me in congratulating Eddie Gray. Antonio Quintero, one of our Spanish teachers, is not here with us tonight. He is with the soccer team on a bus. So hi, Antonio. He is a force to be reckoned with both in and outside of the classroom. He is a soccer coach, a father of two, a mentor to our Latinx students, and a fierce advocate for teaching language for proficiency. He's taught several levels of Spanish here in a short time, including levels two, three, and four, and Spanish heritage. He builds strong relationships with students and with his colleagues. Some quotes from his colleagues that I found meaningful include, "As a coach, I've had the privilege of seeing Antonio teach several classes. I am drawn in with the students due to his dynamic energy as a teacher. No matter the level of his students, Antonio is able to use Spanish in a way that is accessible and engaging. He keeps students moving and doing and learning the entire class period. He is an asset to our department, and I can't wait to see the way in which he continues to enrich our Spanish curriculum." Antonio challenges me personally in the best of ways. I'm a better leader, teacher, and human being because he is here at ETHS. Even though he's not with us here today right now, please join me in congratulating Antonio Quintero. This is Lindsay Schultz, one of our Spanish teachers, and you want her on your team no matter what, no matter what game you're playing. She does handstands, she does backflips, and she puts in 150% in everything that she does. She is the definition of dedicated. She goes the extra mile for every student every day. She makes phone calls home before and after school. She comes up with innovative ways to support struggling students, and she is always on top of current language pedagogy. She listens to podcasts, reads books, and goes down that Pinterest rabbit hole so she can bring in best practices for her students and her colleagues. Her colleagues describe her as authentic, collaborative, a team player, smiling, passionate, and inspirational. They refer to her as quiet, a joy, a quiet leader, someone with a gentle approach. One colleague shared she cares so much about the students and works so hard to make her classroom student-centered and democratic and inclusive. She works hard to make sure everyone involved. She is super creative and works to incorporate meaningful contexts relevant to students' lives and understand that language is ever-changing. Her curriculum and her mentality reflect that. I'd like you all to join me in congratulating Lindsay Schultz. Yi Shi is the first Chinese teacher at Evanston Township High School to achieve tenure. She is committed to helping her students learn about Chinese language and culture. She presents at local, regional, and national conferences. She is the go-to person for beginning teachers in the North Shore to come and observe in Chinese language classrooms. Her colleagues describe her as passionate, dedicated, genuine, and authentic. Her love for students shine. She forms relationships. She makes students, she makes classrooms exciting. One teacher said, "Yi is a teacher I have always wanted to be. Her dedication, energy, and mastery make her a force for good at ETHS. She goes above and beyond the call of duty every day. She brings culture and history into her lessons and oftentimes into our hallways in the school." I don't know if any of you have had the chance to see that Chinese dragon every year or our students singing Christmas carols in the main lobby around holiday time. She teaches from the heart. This is one of the many attributes that she brings to Evanston Township High School, making it a better place to be. Please join me in congratulating Yi Shi in achieving tenure.
And that concludes our presentation of our tenured teachers. Thank you so much, everyone.
So to everybody in attendance, you're welcome to stay, but it's a good time if you'd like to leave. Congratulations, everybody. What a great night.
And as you're leaving, I also want to tell you how proud I am of this moment. Hearing those stories is so, just really lifts me up. So thank you for coming. Thank you to your families who came to support you as well. Okay, we're going to proceed with our meeting. So our next item on the agenda is an update on special education. And Dr. Beavis, are you introducing this?
Sure. Yes. Tonight, we have, Dr. Lewis will be presenting an update on special education. And do you want me to set that PowerPoint up for you? All right, I'll do that. Happy to help.
There he is.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm so excited to, they're saying, "Come on up, pull up a chair. There are five of us." Move on over. Awesome. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you for having us tonight to hear about all the great work we're doing in our department. We are so excited to be here, for you to hear all the things we've done over the past two years in the midst of a pandemic, but also all the things that we're going to be working on moving forward. So first, I'm Dionne Lewis. I'm so glad to be here in front of you, Director of SPED. We have Ms. DeeDee Gill at the end. She's our Assistant Director of Special Programs. Ms. Jerry Helfand, Assistant Director of Operations. Ms. Jamie Ryanheart, Special Ed Department Chair. And Ms. Amy Verbeck, Assistant Director for Instruction.
And I'll just add, and this is an all-star team.
Yes, I refer to us as the dream team because the work that we do is so amazing, and we are really embedded in our dedication to not only our students in the community, but the school at large. So, super excited to be here. So we'll start with, I'm hoping I'm pressing, there it is. Okay, so the Special Ed Department, we have five administrators who you just met. We have 39 teachers, four related service providers who are dedicated to our department, four specialists and coordinators, IEP coordinators, VOKE and transition coordinators, transition specialists, 42 paraprofessionals, and that includes our secretarial staff and assistive technology. Of those 42, about 13 of them are actually assigned to be one-on-ones with specific students. And then we have contracted services of OTPT and Point 6 Speech Language Path. Next year, we know we'll be adding vision and hearing itinerant because we have some students coming in with some of those specific needs. You saw this in the memo, but as of December 1st, we have 533 students with IEPs who we service across the primary disabilities listed. Our largest group is students with specific learning disabilities, and then followed by students with emotional disabilities. Other health impairment and autism are closely followed by them. Numbers by race are up there, and then our off-campus students and in private residential placements as well are on there. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Our number of 533 is actually up 44 students from last school year child count from December 1st of 2020. I'm not going to go through all of this. I just want to highlight the fact that our numbers in general education, 80% of more the day, and in general education, 40% to 79% of the day, are up from last year, which is super exciting for us because that means our young people with IEPs are getting more exposure to the general ed curriculum. If you also look, our numbers in general ed, less than 40% of the day, so our students who are in more instructional classes, those numbers are down, which means we really are working towards our students getting more exposure to general ed curriculum with their non-disabled peers. One thing I do want to note is that bottom number, our residential students out of state, well, in-state, we lost one, but out of state have gone up by five, and we know that is a direct result of the pandemic and the specific needs of the students which are mounting due to a lot of different factors, mental health, environment, and those type of things. So that number has gone up over the course of the past year. So, last year, when I came in, one of the things that we talked about was that the issues, not issues, but the responsibilities that our teachers, our certified teachers, were having in our department were mounting, right? The plate was getting heavier and heavier, and nothing was coming off of it. They were teaching, and so we had to look. They were teaching and case managing and collaborating, and it was just a lot. So last year, we looked at how we can do things different for our department to lighten the load for them. So our goal for last year was to develop a new service delivery model for implementation for this year and increase rigor and engagement through a variety of instructional models while we were in the remote setting. Obviously, remote learning for students with IEPs looks a little bit different, especially for our students with various cognitive impairments. So really, working with our teachers and our instructional staff to make sure that we're meeting those needs in a remote setting. This year, we moved to our new service delivery model, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, and that was really to increase IEP proficiency with our staff members, student engagement, relationships, and address the social, emotional needs and staff effectiveness within our department. We worked on rebranding our therapeutic day school, which we'll talk about, and this year, we have really looked at the needs of our students with cognitive impairments to see how we can better meet their needs, both here academically, as well as when they transition away from us at the age of 22. We are always working on proficiency with IEP development because that's so important, strengthening our instructional practices. Student-led IEPs is a goal. By the time our students graduate, that they are leading their own IEPs and can advocate for themselves, and then strengthening our community partnerships to increase vocational opportunities and training opportunities for our students. So, as I talked about the structural changes, prior to this year, we had a traditional format. Teachers were teaching instructional classes and/or co-teaching and had a caseload of no more than 15 case managers with a learning strategies class. That was last year and in previous years. This year, we moved to a new model, new service delivery WAP model, where our certified teachers were either a case manager or an instructional facilitator. So if you're a case manager, you have three learning strategies classes with no more than 45 students. So if you're a case manager, you have three learning strategies classes with no more than 45 students on your caseload. And during your release time, that's when you are collecting data, working with your students, writing IEPs, those type of things, building relationships, communicating with families. Or you're an instructional facilitator where you are content-focused and you have five instructional classes and/or a combination of that with co-taught classes. So we changed the plate load that our teachers had from carrying both roles to carrying one or the other. That also allowed us to emphasize transition supports and student needs. We created a transition specialist position to focus on transition for our students, as well as moved our, one of our coordinators to just working on, not just, but working on transition and vocation for the department, as well as job placements for our students. We also have a diagnostic case manager who works with SST teams in the initial process for student problem solving for the students who are in the hopper for initial eligibility for special education. And we restructured our administrative roles with the creation of the Assistant Director of Special Programs to oversee our day school, our DLP programs, and our extended school year programs. Our staff was super excited about this, going to this, and they have reported to us on multiple occasions that the new structure has reduced burnout, increased collaboration, allows for stronger student-teacher relationships. There was fewer things to juggle, and they actually do feel appreciated with the work that they're doing, as well as have more access to us as administrators. So, in our main building, we have 274 students with resource services, which means they have three or less special ed classes during the course of their day, their school days, I should say, because of the block schedule, over two days. And then we have 106 students with instructional services. So that means they have four or more classes in the special ed department. We are continuing to increase our inclusionary practices as we are committed to LRE, least restrictive environment, and making sure our students have access to general ed. Prior to this school year, rolling into next school year, the recommendation process was that students in special ed classes were recommended for special ed classes. We have changed that. We're, all students are recommended for gen ed, and teachers have to go in and intentionally change that recommendation to a special ed classroom because we want our students to have that access to the gen ed curriculum. Our targeted goal for our main building programs is least restrictive environment, getting our students in more general education classes and defaulting to general ed classes as we move forward. We talked about case management. One of the unique things about case management is prior to this year and moving on, is our case managers did not loop with their students. So every year, they got a new case manager. And I strongly believe that the more you have a student on your caseload, the more you know them. If you have them from freshman year all the way to senior year, by the time they graduate, you know their parents, you know their family, you know their ups, you know their downs. And that helps us better determine what's going to be in the best interest for them as they leave. So we are going to start looping with our new service delivery model. We, our new model for case management has allowed for problem solving. Our case managers are available to talk about the needs of their students with the teams, with their counselors, with social workers, with related service providers. Where prior to this year, they didn't have that freedom to do that. So the flexibility in their schedule has allowed them to really be able to work in conjunctions with the team for their students. Instructional facilitator, so our classroom teachers. Our goal is to increase co-taught sections over the course of the years to come. In 2020, 2021, last school year, we had 20 sections. This year, we have 23. Next year, we are projected to have 24. Obviously, in a perfect world, we'd like to have many more co-taught classes because the more co-taught classes you have, that means more special education students are within the co-taught environment. We previously, our SPED department, one of the things I heard over and over again was that just because I'm an LBS-1 cert doesn't mean that I can teach everything, right? And we know our teachers have preferences with what they're teaching. So for me, example, for example, I was a math teacher. If you gave me an English class, I'd be able to figure out, but that's not my background. So we have really worked with our teachers to say, "What is your strength? What do you want to teach?" And we will continue to have them teaching in those areas instead of switching preps in classes each year, as well as maintaining positive co-teaching relationships. There have been, there were some changes with co-teaching relationships, and we have found that some of the really positive co-teaching relationships, we want to keep those because it's in the best interest of not just the SPED students, but all of the students within the class. We have also worked with professional development to support our teachers across the department, teaching in a block, which has been a big push this year. Social-emotional learning and mindfulness, democratic classroom, and co-development of curriculum. So the curriculum in our special education classes mirrors the curriculum in the gen ed classes. So our day school. Those of you who have been on the board for some years know the rationale behind us opening the day school. And really, it was about our students who were previously placed in off-campus sites, bringing them back to the Evanston community so that they had the opportunity to be educated in a therapeutic environment in their, in their community. So the day school opened in the summer of 2019, and then opened with a full year for the fall of 2019, for six months when they opened, and then they went on pandemic lockdown. So this was actually the first full, full year for the day school. And our, and our philosophy for them is to provide a space where it's small and supportive, where they can be part of their community and are treated with respect and dignity to embrace their individual and collective diversity while maximizing their potential. Our mission is to provide individual social-emotional support for our students to develop skills so that they're ready with academic programming and post-secondary programming for their success after they leave us. We are committed to the success of the students, and our program goal is to provide students and families with successful educational experiences which foster personal growth, coping skills, and preparation for post-secondary success. I say all that to say, when I came in, there were a lot of questions about the therapeutic day school. What is it? What are we doing? Who are the students who we are recommending, and what does it look like? So over the course of last year and this year, we really worked to put together a profile of what a day school student is. So when our teams are coming together and looking for additional support for our students, they know, yep, this is a day school student. Nope, this isn't, isn't the profile of a day school student. So our day school students, currently, we have 23 of them, and we are projected to start next school year probably closer to 26, with a maximum enrollment of 30. Our characteristics are the majority of our students there have emotional disabilities, but they're internalizers. They're not the students who are picking up the chairs and throwing them. They're the ones who will shut down, who need some additional support. Many of them have mental health diagnosis and have been hospitalized. They all have behavior intervention plans with targeted behaviors, typically around school avoidance, emotional regulation, and effectively using coping strategies. So this information has funneled to our student services teams and our IEP teams. So when they're making determinations about placements for our students, they really know what the profile of a day school student is. So with that being said, can somebody hit play for me? We have a short video that we created around the day school and what, what people need to know about the day school. No volume. Very steady.
In a place where, you know, they've tried lots of things to help their kids, and they don't know where else to go. It's, it's really kind of exciting for me to know here, our families do...
There it is. There we go.
I think one of the greatest gifts about therapeutic day schools is the opportunity for a sense of belonging. When families are in a place where, you know, they've tried lots of things to help their kids, and they don't know where else to go, it's, it's really kind of exciting for me to know here, our families do have a place to go.
We are here to work with you. How you come to us is how you come to us, and we'll work with you to get to where you want to be. It's not a one-size-fits-all program. We individualize everything for the individual needs of the students with the goal of not just now, but the future.
We work with the students in a variety of ways, both within individual sessions, as well as group sessions as needed, as well as helping support them in the classroom. So if students are having specific difficulties within a class or difficulties interacting with peers within a class, the clinical staff can push into that classroom and help support the students, as well as the teacher, to help the student cope with those issues.
A lot of our students are finally able to feel success for the first time. And that kind of builds that intrinsic motivation to want to keep going and to keep doing better. And I think that that's something that we really kind of hone in on too. For, because a lot of our kids who haven't, you know, who've stopped going to school, it might have been because they weren't successful, or because there was something traumatic, and then they just never got around to it. And so now, they're able to reengage and feel successful and feel like this might be something I can do.
We want families to know, whatever the young person desires to do, we're going to support them in that. We thrive on being able to connect with other people and feeling a connection to them. And that's that sense of belonging. So the sense of belonging comes in with working with them to feel, hey, I belong here. I have myself, and I'm proud of who I am. But now, let me feel connected to my community, my community in my classroom, my community in my building at the day school, at ETHS, my Evanston community, and beyond.
That sense of belonging is, is really critical for growth. It's critical for your growth and my growth. And in having a day school, to be able to create that sense of belonging for kids who, in the high school, might otherwise feel like they don't belong. You know, that is truly, it's key, and it's amazing. So, you know, when we talk about that difference, like, what is the difference? A day school can, can provide that place where we create a sense of belonging.
Say, the first probably four times I watched that video, I got teary in my, my eyes because it's the work that we do and why we do it, right? Those are our most vulnerable students, and we have a program in place now that is really here in their community to support them, and that's why we do what we do. So our day school right now has 3.4 certified staff, two paraprofessionals, a psychologist, a psych intern, a social worker, which we added new this year because we knew that our students needed some additional therapeutic supports. Two safety personnel, a secretary, and an administrator. You heard us talk in the video about a sense of belonging, and we have really, this year, worked with Circle of Courage, which is around emotionally, understanding that emotionally healthy young people need a sense of belonging, like we talked about, mastery, independence, and generosity. And this is the foundation for psychological resilience and positive individual outcomes. So this is really the work that we're doing with our teachers and with our students to ensure that they're getting what they need to, when they graduate, be able to access the supports when they need, and they've identified that they need them as they become members of our community. Our, our day school has graduated 25 students since opening, which is pretty amazing if you think about bringing them back and they're graduating from their community and being here in the environment. So the pillar of the social-emotional work that we're doing really quickly around Circle of Courage, the generosity tenet, is that characters develop from concern for others so young people can know, say, and demonstrate they have a purpose in the world. Independence is a tenet that free will is developed by responsibility so that young people can know, say, and demonstrate they have power to make decisions. Belonging is a tenet that there is a universal desire for human bonds and has developed the relationships for, of trust so that youth can know, say, and demonstrate they are loved. And then mastery is the tenet that is a desire for learning is developed and that coping with various situations allow youth to say no and demonstrate they can succeed. And this is based on a book study called Reclaiming Youth at Risk. Our, our, our young people have worked really hard. And if you look at those pictures, it's pretty amazing because that, they have a partnership with the Rebuilding Warehouse, which is right next door, and they picked out a piece of furniture that they were going to reclaim as part of their Circle of Courage. And so in the upper-left corner, you see, that's the original piece. They took it apart, they sanded it, they worked together as a team of students and redesigned it. And it is a beautiful piece of furniture. I said, "There is no way we are giving that back to the Rebuilding Warehouse because our kids worked so hard on it." So it is now in our office with the rebuilding. They, they ordered a plaque because our students did it. And so that's really about the tenets of generosity and knowing that they belong and knowing that they can give back to the community. And then one of the other partnerships we have is Kids Create Change, which is centered around stories of young people, many types who are marginalized, and using their voice through equity and social justice and art to be able to express that through social-emotional development. We also have a partnership with the Center for Independent Futures, which is a nonprofit organization which comes in and works with our students on supporting them with a variety of areas for post-secondary success. So our next special program is TEAMS, which was formerly our DLP and Transition House. TEAMS stands for Transition Education and Mindfulness for Success. We currently have about 40 students between the two programs. As you saw in our goals, we are really working to transform this to support our students earlier with more access to vocational skills, education, and training before they hit 18. Prior to kind of our restructuring, our programs worked in two silos. Our students came into the DLP program, got their, their core requirements for school out of the way in the first four years, and then the next four years, because we usually keep them till they're 21, they went to the Transition House and started their VOKE development. I firmly believe that if we have them at 14, why not start the VOKE training now so that they can get more skills, get access to different areas, get to know what they want, and then we can support them in that. So we are working to revamp our TEAMS program so that our students will be able to access both the Transition House and academic courses throughout the eight years that we have them, rather than four and four. So that's kind of what this, this says. The restructuring of the program will have us move away from being two distinctive programs, which share students, to one flexible program where students move from various environments to gain functional academic and vocational skills earlier in their high school. The restructuring is, is a result, we will have some staffing changes and course changes and curriculum changes, but we know that's better for the needs of our students. Currently, we have a wide range of students, many of whom are under the auspice of autism and intellectual disabilities, but you also see, we have students with specific learning disabilities, as well as multiple disabilities. Our program functions are functional academics, to focus on independent living and supporting their outcomes, as well as competitive employment opportunities, independent work opportunities to get them in the community with the skills that they need in order to, when they graduate, become productive members of our community. We have a lot of partnerships within our TEAMS program. We're partnering with the CTE Department so that our students have access to their general education peers, their curriculum, and the materials and resources within the CTE Department. Center for Independent Futures, which I talked about before. The Youth Jobs Center, the Department of Rehab Services, the City of Evanston's Mayor Employment. And new this year is the Illinois Center for Transition and Work. This is a really exciting opportunity for us because it is a partnership through a grant that we applied for and we got, where we have supported assistance for our students within the TEAMS program. And ideally, we'd like to mirror this for all of our students with IEPs who know that they're going to be entering some type of work, competitive work employment. Basically, what this grant is, is we have a support through UIC, who comes in, and they do, what's a good word for it?
Consultation?
Consultation, there we go. Consultation around resource mapping for our VOKE students. So for example, if I'm in the TEAMS program and I know that I want to be a hairdresser, this individual will work with me to say, "Where do you live, Deanna? How far are you willing to travel?" I say, "Three miles." They say, "Okay, where are all the hair studios within three, oops, three miles of your home? How are you going to get there? Are you going to walk? Are you going to ride the bus? Are you going to ride a bike? How are you going to get there?" We'll figure that out. And then, once you have mapped all of those potential employment places, we reach out to those employers to see if... to those employers to see if they're willing to get our students to train them, and then we place students accordingly. So when our students leave, they have a vocational map of what they desire to do, based upon their skills and who's willing to employ them. We would like to do this for all of our IEP students, as well as branch out to independent living and education and training. So when our students leave, they have this resource map of all the various resources that are available to them within the determined areas that they have said that they can access. So we obtained that grant through UIC, the Illinois Center for Transition Work, and they are working with us on starting that process with our TEAMS program. And once we have a model for it, a foundation for it, we'll be able to do that with our other students. This is some pictures of our TEAMS students out and about in the community, and the work that they're doing. Our next program, special programs, is Edge Squared. Edgy, as we like to say, because it has the two E's, Educating, Developing, and Guiding Empowered Evanstonians. Now, the goal of this program is really, the profile of these students are cognitively, are these students in this program aligned with TEAMS, but they present much higher with their pragmatic, their social skills. So when you see these young people, they present just like their non-disabled peers, but functioning cognitively, they are much lower. So we launched this program in January with seven students. We're projected at the start of next school year to be full with 12. These are students who we know need vocational skills, but probably are not going to stay till they're 21 or 22, so we need to get them skills and training a little bit earlier. The development of this program has allowed us to extend our continuum of services with a least restrictive environment here in the building. They currently have self-contained five core classes, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Reading. Right now, they have two learning strategies and PE. Next year, they'll have one learning strategies, a wellness and PE class, as well as a job skills, to start that job focus. This program utilizes a Circle of Courage, just like the day school, and we have developed an alternative to suspension program for these young people when they are engaged with the Dean process, so that they are not in school, so they're not suspended out, but so they start the restorative process in those conversations with their discipline. Our goal of these young people is earning high school credits, but also earning skills to be competitive and independent in their work and education when they leave. Off-campus and residential placements. Obviously, our goal with these programs is to educate our students in the least restrictive environment in the community they reside, so that they have access to their non-disabled peers. Since August, we have brought back 12 full-time students to either the therapeutic day school, to the main building, or the Transition House, which is amazing, because that means these students are no longer in residential placements, they're off-campus programs, they are here in the community with their peers, which is pretty amazing. We have also started a dual-continuum model. We have seen previously, when students are ready to come back, they'll do a dual enrollment, part-time at a therapeutic day school, part-time here. But students who may need a more restrictive environment have been moved from the main building to 100% therapeutic day school, where now we are saying, maybe we can do some dual enrollments the other way, where they're doing a dual enrollment here and going to a therapeutic day school, if they're stepping up or stepping down. As I talked about before, our residential programming, obviously, we have increased some of those placements because of the various needs. The state recognizes that this is something that everybody is encountering, not just us. So there are some new laws on the book that allow, because residential facilities are so packed, that allows us to place students in non-ISB-approved sites if we have exhausted all of the sites, and there are no beds, there are no available spots for students that we're looking to place. This is a last resort, obviously, because we don't want to place students in sites that are not approved, but it gives us some options if we have students who we know need residential placements, but we don't have placements where we can place them. We currently have students placed residentially in Montana, Wisconsin, Missouri, Ohio, and in Massachusetts. This is an area that I have been really excited in, because our paraprofessionals are our first line of defense with the work that they're doing with our young people, and they have previously not been given the support or the professional development they needed to maximize their efforts with our young people. So we have created, over the past two years, a comprehensive PD program for our paraprofessionals. They have all been trained in non-violent crisis intervention and de-escalation. They've had a SPED basic seminar on addressing what SPED is, addressing behaviors, how to read IEPs, how to implement IEPs. We have also given them Master Teacher Professional Development, which there are over 175 various courses from things like addressing anxiety, implementing behaviors, progress monitoring, and the list goes on and on, where they can get professional development. We assign them courses, they complete the courses, which are aligned to CEC and case standards. They have cohorts, so all of our 42 paras are divided amongst the five of us to meet with us and have access to admin on a regular basis for questions. And we have a parapro who is dedicated to assistive technology, to support assistive technology integration within the classrooms. He works with our Infinitec partnership, and he is in school right now to obtain his assistive technology certification through UIC. On the horizon, what we're looking at moving forward, more co-talk opportunities for our students, more robust partnerships with our CTE, Fine Arts, and PE departments, and fully student-led IEPs by their senior or final year. The day school, we're going to continue to develop the Circle of Courage tenants, strengthen our community partnerships, and increase data collection to make sure that we're meeting their post-secondary needs. TEAMS, we're looking at curriculum adoption, integrated approach to making sure that they're getting what they need, CTE connections, general education access, and utilizing that UIC partnership. This is our transition framework that we're looking at for supporting our students within whatever area they are, to make sure that they have the coaching and supports that they need, whether they are going to be entering a rehab facility, or in-house supported employment when they leave us, all the way to going to college, four-year college of university, making sure that they have the skills when they leave those universities to be in the competitive employment market. With the goal of every one of our students being ready for competitive integrative employment, at whatever stage of life that they're in. Edge squared is to continue to build out the program, using Circle of Courage, and enhancing their post-secondary options. Off-campus and residential placements, we're looking to maximize reintegration, continuing our professional development and cohorts for our parapros. We have created a Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, which meets bimonthly, and next year, we'll have targeted in general meetings for our parents to continue to get support within our department on the various needs for their young people. Our biggest goal is around post-secondary, and making sure that our students have the skills that they need and the access to community resources for post-secondary options, and that includes vocation and career opportunities, and training for competitive employment. We are going to implement Lunch and Learns to be able to support our Gen Ed colleagues with supporting our students in their classes, and we are going to revamp our website to make sure that we have a variety of resources for our students, staff, and parents. One of the things that we are doing within our TEAMS program is we are going to have a simulated work process, where they will be able, through our website, to click on the jobs available, read the skills necessary for them, and then be able to apply for the job through a Google form, interview with a teacher, and then be able to assess their needs through our website. So that's where we're at as a SPED department. What questions do you have for us? That was a lot. That was a lot.
So thank you. Thank you for that report, and thank you for all of those details. That is how I know Special Ed. It encompasses everything, because there's so many needs, and we have to be ready to serve all of the students.
Yes.
And all of them come with very unique stories and backgrounds. So I just loved it, actually.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're excited about the work that we do. Like I said, we're the dream team.
Yeah, the dream team.
We are the dreams. We have sweatshirts that say it. We work really hard at what we do, but we know it's in the best interest of our young people that we support, so.
Okay, questions, board? It's very thorough. Pat?
Yeah, well, thank you. That was an incredible report, and also a lot behind it, a lot of great work, so thank you for both. One thing I just, you said towards the end, which I just want to raise up, is the Lunch and Learns for Gen Ed. Do more of that, do lots more of that, because regular classroom teachers, even if they don't have quote-unquote "Special Ed" students, need the diversity of strategies and thinking. And I'm saying this from personal experience, I was a Gen Ed teacher who desperately would have loved to have you, I would have gone to your Lunch and Learn every time. So just a couple things that you kind of touched on, but I'm curious to know a little more. So you mentioned the student-led IEPs, which is great. What are some of the ways, either in even developing this model, or other ways, that you're really trying to integrate student voice? I think, we think about that all the time, we talk about that here for general education students, but I think sometimes, again, from some experiences that I'm familiar with, the Special Ed students don't have as much voice. And I guess I'd love to hear how you're approaching that, given that you're trying to get them to do their own IEPs later in their high school career.
I'm going to let Amy answer that one.
So yeah, that's a great question, so thank you. Definitely through student-led IEP process, and I recognize that that's only one of the processes that we have at our disposal, but it's also a very complex one. For a student to engage in a meeting with their trusted adults in that way, and speak vulnerably about what they need, and then also identify their goals for themselves, and what they need from others is pretty critical. And so what also needs to happen is that preparation for that, which most typically occurs in their learning strategies time with their case manager, or with their related service providers that are also assisting them in that process. I would also share that there is additional work happening within our instructional classes as well, particularly around democratic classroom, and building those tenets in our instructional practices, so that students have voice in leadership within the classroom settings as well, utilizing their strengths in those ways, so that they can be contributors and feel that sense of satisfaction in that, in the classroom as well. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
I'm going to put DeeDee on the spot, too, because it looks a little bit different for our students with cognitive disabilities in our TEAMS programs, and what it looks like over the course of eight years. So DeeDee, if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So I think, especially this year, which is my first year with the TEAMS program, we're really working hard with students to give them voice and choice in the courses that they're taking, aligning those with their outcomes, and their strengths, preferences, and the supports that we know they need. So, for example, our staff worked really hard with students to look at elective choices and really be intentional about expanding their opportunities in the general education setting, and trying to find ways that maximize their outcomes long-term by really working with students, specifically on what their interests are, and how we can utilize the resources within our own community here at ETHS, to really maximize those. So that's one way that we've been working within the TEAMS program, to develop that. I would also add, at the day school, it's really just an incredible place where students are able to create opportunities for belonging, so we're asking students a lot about what creates that opportunity for them. We're moving into this quarter, the quadrant of generosity, and so that quadrant really speaks to, where do we give back? And the project that our students will engage in will come from the students. It will be really their opportunity, their voice, and we work a lot on that regularly, but this quarter is very exciting for us in that respect. So I think always looking at ways we can get student voice in those specialized programs is certainly a focus in our department, so.
That's great. Yeah, because I think, I mean, certainly, it's very important for them to be involved in the IEP process and learn how to self-advocate, but they aren't only their disability. And so to hear their voices in other places and ways, I think is very empowering, and also helping them to see that there are lots of things. Maybe they are X disability, but there are also many, many other things. So I think that's great. The other question might, it's kind of related, but I guess the level of individualization. I know you're beholden to laws that we couldn't print enough pieces of paper to show, and so there's a lot of structure and a lot of rules, and I get that, but how, and I saw it kind of sprinkled through the model, or at least I think I did, in terms of how you're sort of addressing students, again, not just for their disability, but for them as a person. And sort of where are you, how are you individualizing, or do you see that, in this model, that you're individualizing our opportunities to do so with students that maybe are a little different? Maybe they aren't just, okay, this is what, these are the three things we do for this, right? Because the law tells us to do that, or whatever. So maybe that question is a little unclear, but hopefully you understand. It's really about how do we really meet those individual needs for each student?
And I hope this answers your question. That's the joy of the model, right? Because it's really threefold, right? You have the case manager piece, who they can target the individual needs of their student, because even though they have up to 45 students on their caseload, they really have time to know their students and work with them, they get their learning strategies. But during their release time, if they need to go sit in a math class, or a science class, or a CTE class, or a PE class, to support their students, they can. So that's where the individualization comes. I'm going to let Jamie talk a little bit about the instructional facilitator side of it, because our instructional facilitators, even though they're not case managing, they work in partnership for that individualization for our students with IEPs.
Hi. So I think in general, right, like speaking to the laws, I think that's the foundation for the individualization, and that's what allows us to individualize for students. So it starts with like the IEP process, right, and really looking at student functioning, whether it's academic, functional levels of performance, to really make sure they're in the least restrictive environment. And so that's an individualization in itself, right? Like, does a student have two classes of special education? Do they only need learning strategies? Are they in more instructional classes? So that's part of it. But then, further with what Deanna was talking about with case management, I think that's really been a joy for me to see, with this being my first role in department chair, and having access to, you know, more problem-solving with TEAMS, which is what I really appreciate, like the collaboration, and really, you know, seeing how TEAMS understand the students, how they're currently functioning, what their needs are. So kind of to your point, going beyond, you know, what is our list of accommodations for students, right? But beyond that, what do they really need, you know, emotionally, academically, behaviorally, and to be able to have the freedom and opportunity to develop what that looks like with the voice of the students, and the family, and instructional facilitators, or general education teachers, and the case manager who works with them more frequently, right, and just gets to know them more in-depth. And then, just more locally, to the instructional facilitators and the classrooms, being able to develop curriculum that meets the students' needs through, you know, assessment, and again, really having the data-driven decisions, as far as, you know, reading level or math, and, you know, where students are met where they are, but also challenged, obviously, so that they can build the skills that they need to be successful.
I will also say that that's the joy of the model, too, is because previously, you're trying to figure out who the student's case manager is. Do you have time that, that's the same time that you're free to be able to access them? But now, because our case managers are just focused on that case management, it gives our Gen Ed teachers and our instructional facilitators more access to be able to say, "Hey, I have your student in class, I need help," or "Can we talk a little bit more?" Our teachers have really been able to say, "We like the collaborative process that we have in place now, because our roles are so clearly defined, and we know who to go to and how to get to them."
Yeah, that seems great. Thank you all. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? I was going to ask you to elaborate just a little bit on parent groups. You mentioned that you have a parent group that meets bimonthly. What other supports do you have for parents? And I know, once again, with the number of student needs, there are also a lot of different types of parent needs.
So we're actually, because we're in the infancy stages, we're trying to tease that out a little. out a little bit, right? Because our parent group at first, we brought everybody together. We had a good turnout. We had like, what, 40 people first sign up? And they came and we talked about kind of our mission and what we're going to do. We had parents who asked, can we have parents who are just teams parents? Can't we have just day school parents? Because the needs of, you know, an instructional student versus a resource student versus a team student versus a day school student and what their parents are going to need are very different. And so we are continuing to tease that out. Our last parent advisory committee, we talked about resource mapping for parents and what that looks like, because even though we think our team students are the only students who need to know about housing, that's not the case. Every student who we have in this building, let alone has an IEP, is going to need to know how to access housing at some point, right? So really figuring out what is the best avenue to be able to get parents what they need to know, even if they don't know that they need to know it and what it looks like. So we're still working on those pieces. We have been able to access our parent advisory committee as a way to say, this is something that would help us. And that's what we're going to tease out next year is even though it's bimonthly, it may have to be something that we're doing monthly where every other month is for all parents, where, you know, one month is targeted for day school, one month is targeted for resource parents, because it is, it's really important to be able to access that and get the word out. We do mass emails. And that is one of the reasons too, that we want to revamp our website is because that's really the first place people go, right? Is to say, I'm going to click on here and see what information we have. And so that is the one stop shop that we'd like to create for our parents to be able to say, hey, this is where I can click and go. But if I want more resources, I can go to our parent advisory group. Did I, did I capture everything? Got it?
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
Oh, we do, we do too, thank you, Amy, have four evening events over the course of the school year with partnership with the Center for Independent Futures, where they come in and they talk about various things from housing to, we do community resources where we partner with like the city of Evanston. They talk about special rec, they talk about those pieces as well. We have also talked about, one of our last, in our last parent advisory group, one of the parents asked about legal help. And that's that fine line, right? Because we want them to be able to know what their rights are, but we can't say, okay, here's an attorney that you can use against us, right? So really just being able to help them learn how to navigate some of those resources, but supporting them in the process, because that's why, why we're here. So we, we do pair with Center for Independent Futures to provide some, some workshops for our parents as well.
Thank you. Liz.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a couple of questions. First, just wanted to say thank you for the detailed memorandum and the presentation tonight. I'm looking at the overall IEP numbers under, it looks like the majority fall under specific learning disability. Can I assume that most of those are related to dyslexia? Or is there something else?
So. No, I mean, I can't. You can. So the first thing I would say is the majority of students that we get with specific learning, learning disabilities are students that we've inherited from District 65. They are not initials because they are students who over time have exhibited some learning difficulties in, in different areas. We don't necessarily diagnose based on, like, if a student has diagnosed from another provider with dyslexia or dysgraphia or something like that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to put that in our report for eligibility, because really it's based upon the need that we have determined or District 65 has determined, is there need based upon testing and psychs and all of that. A parent can bring in an independent eval that says, you know, we had a psych and they came back and said that our student is dyslexic, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the majority of our students with learning disabilities have dyslexia or dysgraphia. It's more about their lack of response to an intervention that has been put in place in reading or in writing or in math or in another area.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is I was just curious about what sort of methodologies or curriculum are you using to address dyslexia?
Let Amy jump in there. So predominantly, we're using a research-based program called HG Word, and that is addressing decoding-based instructional deficits and trying to close that gap. We're also using Reading Plus, which is one of our interventions for individualization that can take place in any of our settings. So either in our direct instruction, reading intervention classes or in our resource program. And that's an individualized online program and with repetition, you know, provides students with that opportunity at grade level material or instructional level material and then frequent practice and reinforcement to, to address those skill area needs. And then we progress monitor with STAR assessment so that we can get indicators that those interventions are working. In addition to that, there's curriculum-based reading intervention that's happening in our reading classes. And that's, you know, utilizing texts at students instructional levels and then working on pieces like fluency and comprehension strategies. Again, utilizing current materials within those students' classes so that, but at their instructional levels so that they can build those skills towards independent reading.
Thank you. I just had one other question. I was kind of hoping tonight to see some, some data on the academics and some other things in the special ed department. So I was thinking along the lines of like, how, how are the students doing? How are they doing academically? How are they doing in literacy and social emotional health? Maybe as compared to before the pandemic, during the pandemic now? Like, is there anything you can tell us about the overall health of the students right now?
I don't know how to answer that. I mean, go ahead, Jamie.
I mean, I was going to say, thinking about data wise, like we don't have anything that we pulled as far as like quantitative data, you know, around health, pre, during, and not quite post, but current with related, with regard to the pandemic. I will say that a lot of the problem solving meetings that I've been involved in have revolved around truancy or attendance related to mental health or emotional well-being. So students with, and I think we've talked as a team, just seeing an increase in anxiety and certainly that's not, you know, local to our school, our district, our community. But I think that that is, you know, again, not quantitative, but something that we see as a trend.
And I'll point out, whenever we give any report, graduation rate, attendance, suspensions, academic performance, we always, one of the demographics that we always break out and report are our students with special needs. So, so that is incorporated in every one of the reports that we bring forward to the board.
I also think you talked about students during, excuse me, during the pandemic and their needs and the challenge of working with students, you know, when we were completely shut down and on Zoom and, and just how difficult that was for students with IEPs. And that kind of speaks a little bit to what you were talking about, Liz, and just actually looking at students. When we were reviewing what was, what was coming this year, how we were going to support students. You know, we talked a lot about students' well-being and mental health and, you know, really, these are the students who are the most vulnerable. I don't remember which one of you said that. We know that. And we know that these are the students who struggled the most during those last, these last two years.
Definitely. And we, we recognize that coming back into the school year, and I think that's, once again, the joy of this model is that we have people who are dedicated to be able to address that through problem solving. I don't, I think it was over 60, over 60 meetings, problem solving, 30-day review meetings that we've had for students with IEPs this year. We, we as a team come together quite often to problem solve, what else can we do for students? How can, because we, we know this is the best place for them. We know being here with the teachers, being here at Evanston is the best place for them. So we really look to problem solve to say, you know, a student who is truant, an in-house truant, who's having attendance issues, what can we do to support them? Can we change their schedule? Can we reduce their schedule? How can we, can we do home visits? What else can we do to really support them? Because we know that this is the environment where they can get what they need to be successful. Not just academically, but to get the, the support that they need for their mental and social well-being.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So thank you again. Thank you for this incredible report. Lots of really good details.
Thank you.
Lots to take in.
Thank you. Yes, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Lots for the future.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So thank you so much. Thank you to your team, the dream team. All right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is recovery of ESER funds update. And I believe Mary is going to lead that. It's about her time. Mary, it's your time. So we, we purposefully waited until this time, knowing that you were coming up on the agenda. We couldn't do it before nine.
But I fooled you. I only have like three slides tonight. Okay. Sorry, just finding my place. Okay. Hello, board. This is just a quick update for you. I know you have some information in your packet, and I just wanted to give you a little information about ESER or recovery money. We've known it by a few names. CARES Act was kind of what I consider to be round one of the recovery funding. And then we started calling it ESER, so we kind of have an ESER two and a three. But just for continuity, I've been calling it ESER one, two, and three. So we all know that we're talking about the same thing. I do want to apologize. There's a, an error in my memo. When I talk about the round one and round two allocations, round one was 290,000. Round two was just over a million. Sorry, I left the number at my seat. But they totaled 1 million. Oh, thanks. It was, I think it's 1,630,000 even. That was round two. And then they totaled 1.3 million, 1.3 million, $53,000. And then now we're really talking about round three. So just an update, a status of round one and two funds. I think we'd all probably agree that the, the last two years have been in some ways a blur and in some ways they feel like they've lasted 10 years. But we, we had some real immediate needs that came up. You know, originally, we were all thinking this was going to be a little two-week shutdown and, and then things got a little crazy. So with the first round of ESER funds, you know, there were a lot of cleaning disinfection needs. There were a lot of PPE needs. There were some immediate technology needs. And we've talked a little bit about that in both, I would say, the finance updates. And then there were a few comments about it in the COVID updates. I think Marcus did most of those. And then I did some finance updates while our meetings were still remote. So then as we progressed a little bit further, we had, we had some needs for air filters and summer curriculum projects. Staff, I'm certainly not the expert on what those involved, but staff were all planning for continuity. How do we, how do we bridge subjects from, you know, in-person to remote and then eventually hybrid? And so there, I, I think every staff member, if I remember correctly, worked on a summer curriculum project in the summer of 2020. We didn't know what was in store for the fall of 2020. Once we had a summer school program that was primarily in-person but also hybrid last summer in 2021, most of those school fees were free to families. There were only a few classes that had associated fees. So there was a significant cost there. There were still some technology needs, some hotspot needs. And of course, we continue to have cleaning and disinfect, disinfecting needs. We had some custodial overtime. And then finally, there was a big expense for outfitting our 250 some odd classrooms with what I would call a technology station once we started talking about hybrid learning. So that's kind of just a recap of what we were looking at with ESER one and two funds. I'm just going to grab my water. Sorry. Marcus is taking care of me. Okay. So ESER round three, my understanding is the requirements are a little different. We've all had some time to kind of sit back and think about what might be a little more long-term recovery need. So that's what we've been doing internally off and on for a while. We spoke to the board about it kind of in general terms and said we would come back and want to have some discussions, give you some information about where we were on ESER round three. I'm so impressed that you're all still here. I didn't expect to see them when I got up to get my water. But thank you. I mean, I'm not going to go an hour. It's my own little dream team back there. So, sorry. So as we thought about ESER three, again, I'm, I'm certainly not the most qualified academic person to describe this, but we all felt really fortunate that we had multiple levels and layers of support already in place really to help students. We talked about this a little bit today. And, and so the academic programs and recovery programs and things for learning loss, we have been fortunate to be a conservative, a financially conservative district that, you know, has set aside funds to, to really have those resources and interventions for students. And so as we thought about how best to spend round three and wanted to come and talk about it, we came up with what I would say primarily one-time spending for what is primarily one-time funding. We do have a few positions that we have, you know, discussed for the use of these grant funds. And let me just say, we have not applied for, officially applied for the round three funding yet. So that would be the next step in this after we sort of finalize this discussion. But this is where we have kind of put our heads together and thought that it would be best to allocate this money. What's nice about recovery money, unlike some of the other grants we've gotten, like federal pass-through grants, is you can take that time and think about the spending and then request reimbursement for things. So we have some positions that have been discussed for being targeted with these funds. We did add an additional social worker this year. We added two 504 coordinators, an athletic trainer with COVID responsibility, a COVID tracer, and then there were some other incidental expenses, PPE, tent rentals, contractual payments. So clearly, a social worker, 504 coordinators, like those are not one-time expenses. But what's also nice about recovery money is you can use it for things like these positions. And then the district has a couple of years to sort of work those into our general budget. So that's kind of the thinking on some of those positions. Obviously, a COVID tracer position won't be needed forever. Right now, we just have it kind of slotted in as one year. And I guess, you know, we'll see what's coming up with any unexpected, you know, COVID outbreaks or mitigations. But that, that's a, a portion of the funding and, and how we would propose to, to use those funds. And then the biggest chunk would really be for one-time capital needs. And primarily, those needs would focus on things that accomplish a better usage of ventilation, HVAC systems, building control systems, airflow. You certainly could use it on things like windows. We have a huge window project going on this summer as part of a two-year e-school project. So you'll see this is similar to the information that was in the memo, and that would be for capital projects to improve our building controls, system automation, airflow, and HVAC, which I think is a, is a conservative use of one-time money. And it is similar to what the district did back in 2010 when the ARA funds came out. That's when we did the cafeteria courtyards and made those ADA accessible and made those spaces that could be used by students better than they were. And I'm really glad we did. And I'm really glad we did because we've really been using them for the last year. So what would happen now is that we have, we have a way on our website that will be taking public input because part of what the Esser round three guidelines say is that you should accept public input on how funds would be spent. So what we've presented to you is our proposal for how those funds would be allocated. And then we would plan to accept public input on our website beginning tomorrow for two weeks. And then if there are revisions and things, we would wanna come back and I would talk to you about that at the May 9 meeting and then make any revisions to the spending plan at that point and then have an, an actual board approval that night on May 9. So that's really all I had. I think the, the additional information and kind of a breakdown of years one and two are in the packet, but I've covered all the areas of the spending that we are proposing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, talk about spending, past spending, future spending, if you'd like to. We feel pretty comfortable and confident with the programs and things we had in place. We just had a conversation this morning, Marcus, Eric, Scott, Pete, about all the tiers of support that we already have in place for students. We already have a Saturday school, we had a, you know, primarily free summer school. And so we feel like we've really covered the basis of academic needs as far as Esser funding. You know, it could be used for those purposes, but this would be a huge benefit to the district if we used a good portion of that money on capital projects that would help the airflow and modernize the systems in the building, so.
So Mary, you said that starting tomorrow, you'll be accepting input from the public, and that's on the website?
It will be on the website, starting tomorrow.
It will be on the website?
Yep. Communications has developed a form in English and Spanish. We, I, I did get some assistance from our IT department to kind of develop a, a fill-in form, if you will, that will come directly to our office so that we can review, summarize, and see if suggestions fit into one of the, you know, spending lines we had already thought about, planned for. And then we'll review those maybe on the executive team with Eric as well. And so that's why I wanted to kind of make this a two-part discussion and really come back to you in May to see if anything else, you know, kind of comes to the surface in taking that public input.
Yeah, that, those were some of the questions I had, like what kind of guidelines and, and information will people get and?
And I think the plan, communications department plan is to put that as kind of a banner, one of like the rolling banners on the webpage. And it's a super simple form, I tried it out myself. You just put in your name, your ideas, if you wanna leave an email address and say whether or not you're a parent, an ETHS current parent. And that's it. It really is kind of a paragraph box for people to just submit their input freely. It's not like a yes, no, multiple choice or anything. So that's our plan.
Yes. Look forward to that.
Okay.
So I just thought I'd mention the fact that CPS apparently got $87 million in error.
That wasn't theirs, right? We don't think any of it was ours.
Well, that was my question, do we know that yet or?
Not that we know of. I didn't hear what kind of money that was, was it Esser money?
Yeah, I think it was.
I had not heard that, but what I can tell you is that Esser-
I think it was.
Esser one and two, which we had those kind of real immediate needs for, to, you know, to use that money, we have been reimbursed for that. So Esser three, you can't really even touch the money until you submit the application. And I'm pretty sure that on the application, they ask, have you, you know, solicited for public input and, you know, had these conversations? So as far as I know, no, none of that is ours.
Let us know if it's getting anymore.
I just heard that in passing, so if, if, I did hear that the state was going to send out more money to who it was owed to and try to recoup, like, we don't have to wait for CPS to pay it back, so that's good.
Right, right, right. I mean, there were, there were only, I think, like five districts that had a significant, were cut short a significant dollar figure, but then so many hundreds of districts-
Had smaller amounts.
Lesser amounts, yeah, so who knows?
Yeah, as far as I know, not us. We're not, we're not missing anything.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
All right. Okay, we'll see you back May 9 then.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. All right. Okay, the next item, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Dr. Beavis.
Yes, we have six folks signed up for public comment. Speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal you at the end of two minutes. I'll do a countdown, I'll do two minutes left, one minute left. And then I'll let you know it's time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that becomes necessary, just I ask that you just complete your sentence at that point. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak the lectern up here. Please state your name. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individual are expressly prohibited. Please understand, the school board does not respond to public comment, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Our first public comment this evening is Nathan Orlov Mayer.
Hello. Before I get started, I'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Nathaniel Orlov Mayer, I'm a current senior at ETHS and the hub treasurer of E-Town Sunrise, which is the Evanston hub of the Sunrise movement, which is a large national youth movement that's dedicated to combating the climate crisis and pushing those in power to do the same. I'm here today to reintroduce the idea of a sustainability coordinator for ETHS in District 202. I've got other people here with me, if I could get a show of hands from people who support this idea as well. Awesome, thank you. So in early 2020, this district hired a sustainability coordinator in response to demands from, for climate action from students and community members. And this coordinator's job was to advise the district on how best to implement climate-friendly practices and cut net, cut net emissions. However, the original coordinator didn't really work out for a few reasons. And in the time since, the position here at ETHS has remained empty, even as District 65 hired their own sustainability coordinator and the city of Evanston filled a vacancy after their original sustainability coordinator left. So a sustainability coordinator at ETHS is even more crucial now than it was back in 2020 when the position was first filled, because as time passes, the climate crisis only grows more and more dire and our inaction as a district only becomes more and more inexcusable. This is not an indictment of any current administrators in any way, they're all very competent in their roles and in their areas of expertise, but we just don't have any administrators who have the appropriate experience or background to really push this district in an informed direction on climate and sustainability issues.
Two minutes.
Okay. So if we had a dedicated administrator with a background in climate policy or sustainability, that would really help the district implement changes that most people in this room agree on, but always seem to end up stuck somewhere in planning limbo, like a climate curriculum, effective recycling, renewable energy sources for the school, and a fleet of electric cars for driver's ed. These are all initiatives that my, students like myself have always had to push the district on and work through planning processes to realization, sometimes only to see the school never act on changes it promised to implement. Common sense reforms like these should not be the responsibility of students who should be able, who need to be able to focus fully on our educations instead of having to hand hold the district on the path to putting basic climate resiliency measures in place. It's well past the time for the district to fill this position and start to take actual decisive action against an existential threat that only worsens as we wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Milo Joseph Slevin.
Hello, my name is Milo Slevin, I'm a sophomore at ETHS, also a member of E-Town Sunrise. And I'll begin. So for me, combating climate change holds the promise of a future. It holds the promise of opportunities for a new generation, for my generation. And that's why it's important that we prioritize opportunities for every ETHS student to be involved in fighting for their futures. Now, we all know about the chilling climate change numbers going into the future. And if I was a parent or administrator, I would want my students to know that the planet's average surface temperature has risen about two degrees since the late 19th century, with the seven most recent years being the warmest. If I were a parent or administrator, I would want students to know that Greenland lost an average of 279 billion tons of ice per year between 1993 and 2019, while Antarctica lost one, about 148 billion tons per year. If I were a parent or administrator, I would want students to know about the eight inches that global sea levels have risen by in the last century. And if I were a parent or administrator, I would want students to know about the numerous, heavily populated sinking cities in the world like Miami and New York City.
Two minutes.
So why am I talking to you, the ETHS school board, about this? Because we need to make sure that every single one of the students at this schools knows the same numbers, knows the same dangers, and is equipped to find a solution. Because the fact is that everyone should feel scared. Climate change is an undeniable threat and we need more people who are ready to fight it. That is why I urge the school board today to make sure that there is a climate curriculum implemented in every freshman biology class at the start of the 2023, 2024 school year. I urge the discussion around a civics curriculum on climate change's socioeconomic impact to take place. I urge climate change education to be pushed to the forefront until the school has properly fulfilled their promises. As the council knows, last year, ETHS formed a committee to create a climate curriculum at ETHS. It has both student and administrative representation and I urge the board to listen to them, to take their opinions, and to take action. Now, I'm a lower classman at ETHS and I know the benefit of learning about the climate and having that through the rest of my years at ETHS. I know the impact that this will have on our ETHS community. I go to school every day and wishing, witness the passion that students have for their community and for this planet. I ask now that they and we are given the tools to act on that passion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Emmett Abels Dugan.
Hello, I'm Emmett Abels Dugan, a junior and communications coordinator at E-Town Sunrise. In 2017, energy efficiency company Integrity audited Arkansas's Batesville School District, finding that the district could save at least $2.5 million over the next 20 years with a switch to onsite solar and other energy efficiency measures. A large solar array was installed on district land and action was taken to renovate the district's lighting, HVAC, and insulation. The project slashed annual energy consumption by 1.6 million kilowatt hours, enough power to, enough to power 150 houses for a year and saved nearly 2 million over the first three years alone. In 2020, the district used some of this surplus to increase teacher salaries by thousands of dollars. Batesville, a district of 3,200 students, is of roughly comparable size to District 202. The potential gains for ETHS if it were to invest in such a project are massive, so let's talk about that investment, or rather, the lack thereof. There is no upfront cost to this kind of solar installation. The program works by allowing solar development companies like Integrity to use power purchase agreements to finance, build, and maintain solar arrays on a customer's property.
Two minutes.
The customer then pays the developer for the energy that the panels produce over a period of time, almost always at a lower rate than it would pay the utility. This effectively eliminates the need for an initial investment and allows the school to fully benefit from the cheaper, cleaner energy. The resultant budget surplus can then be used for any number of projects, increasing teacher salaries among them. Not only is this for an opportunity for ETHS to better its own budget and energy usage, it, like many other Evanston projects, can serve as a model for other schools in the area. After Batesville's success, 20 more school districts in the area implemented a similar project. The impact that successful solar at ETHS would have on the surrounding community could be orders of magnitude greater than the isolated change in Evanston. With solar energy cheaper than it's ever been, we recommend that ETHS take the first step in this process. Hire a solar development firm like Integrity to perform an audit of the school and its grounds to determine the potential for on-campus solar and efficiency improvements in the building.
One minute.
This simple audit has the potential to transform ETHS's budget and energy usage, saving millions of dollars and millions of kilowatts. Thank you.
Next is Marie Cabaya.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marie Cabaya and I'm a Latina mother to an incoming ETHS freshman this fall. I've been involved with the 65 climate action teams for the past few years and we are proud to actually now have a sustainability coordinator that we hope will be announced very, very soon. I'm also an obstetrician gynecologist with a deep interest in environmental health and the effects of climate change on health. So why hire a sustainability coordinator? Climate change is the biggest challenge that this new generation is gonna be facing with them in the future. I hope that we're all on the same page, that the days of thinking that we can address the climate change by recycling are over and that we're really replaced by the deep knowledge that unfortunately, this is as serious as impacting the health and well-being of every living being. So the CDC breaks down the health effects of climate change into eight different parameters, but don't worry, I'm not gonna bore you with all those. But suffice it to say, I'll just focus on the extreme effects, the effects of extreme heat on health. So unfortunately, the effects of extreme heat are significant in terms of respiratory illness, increased cardiovascular disease, and in my OB-GYN world, adverse effects in pregnancy outcomes, babies that are increased risk for miscarriage or fetal anomalies, et cetera, et cetera. So we're changing the human race from its very inception.
Two minutes.
So if you think that deaths are, you know, way overly dramatic, all you have to do is to think about the 1995 Chicago heat wave that happened right here in our very own backyard and left 739 people dead. There are still mass graves in the, in the suburbs where some of these bodies are buried. And unsurprisingly, these deaths affected mostly people that were in zip codes that were marked by poverty and lack of resources. So I, to me, that always drives home the point that in Evanston, we always talk about doing the hard work of equity and I really just can't think that we can really respond to the equity work that we have to do without addressing the injustices inherent in climate change. So why hire a sustainability coordinator? Because a job that is as complex as adopting a climate action curriculum, creating a plan towards decarbonization, educating the community in conservation of resources, just can't be done by just piecemeal efforts here and there.
One minute.
This really requires somebody with expertise and who's empowered to reach across departments in order to achieve the necessary goals and reap the financial benefits that such a position can bring. Finally, just as a matter of fairness, I just really think that as the older adults, we need to consider what it is to leave the younger generation feeling the urgency of this while we just sit back and feel like we have all the time in the world. So the change that is needed can't be brought about without a concerted effort that a sustainability coordinator would bring. And finally, as ETHS is one of Evanston's large employers, it has a responsibility to show its commitment to the climate action resilience plan and the mandate for climate action that that has shown from up above in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eleanor Jones.
I am Eleanor Jones, I'm a junior here at ETHS. Recently, an email was sent out regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Week and what is planned to honor it here. I would like to believe that the intentions were honorable and not simply to save face. However, in my time at ETHS, I have never heard of someone who had a positive experience when going to administration for help after they have been assaulted or harassed. As a matter of fact, the stories I have heard reflected the same type of victim blaming that they claim they will teach against. I know students who have been told that they were assaulted because their grades were not high enough. I know students who have had to suffer through predatory teachers because admin decided it was not worth it to fire them even with incriminating evidence. I know people who have to walk past their abusers and rapists every day because admin refuses to do anything about it. I myself am forced to sit two seats behind my abuser every day. I do not use these terms lightly and I can tell you that it is not a pleasant experience in any way, shape, or form. Last summer, I was threatened with suspension for confronting a student who is known to have sexually assaulted multiple people. The exact phrase the dean used was, "We can't have vigilante justice here." I did not threaten this student in any way. I walked up to him and said, "You know what you did and you can't pretend it was okay." And I walked away. I did not yell. I did not hit him. I said my piece and I walked away. I have not interacted with him since. If this is admin's version of vigilante justice, so be it. I won't sit here and pretend that I have the power to unravel the idiosyncrasies of the ETHS administration. I know where I stand. But let me ask this, if they refuse to enact actual justice, who will? Why have they created a system where students feel so unsafe and unheard that this so-called vigilante justice is necessary? By no means do I intend to sound disrespectful or ungrateful. I think that this learning on sexual assault is very important and we are very lucky to have even a baseline of education on it.
One minute.
However, that does not mean that I will hesitate to enlighten others on the practices that actually occur here at ETHS. At the end of the day, I am tired, tired of administration's actions and the hypocrisy within them. All I can hope for- All I can hope for is that at least one of you will actually hear me and not dismiss this in the same way administration has dismissed far too many survivors. Thank you.
Next is Ethan Schaefer.
Ethan left.
Ethan left. That concludes this evening's public comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't know about the sign-in. Do you have time for one more comment?
Since Ethan's not going ahead, sure.
I think it's time.
And you, and just say your name and address so we can get you on that record.
Um.
Oh, you can call to the.
Okay.
My name's Jeff Green. I am here as a representative of the Evanston chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby and in support of the students that are asking for a sustainability coordinator. So first of all, lose the single-use plastic bottles, because we're talking about sustainability. And I say that as a Chase Bank customer, so I don't have a leg to stand on, but just an observation. I also want to observe that the kind of audience that we had here at the beginning of this meeting is probably the kind of audience that we would need to be part of this discussion, and I'm sorry that this came up so late in the agenda after most of the audience left. The lifestyle of the global north is unsustainable, and students must learn, must be given the tools to transform our society from its current unsustainable trajectory to a way of living that does not destroy the ecosystems upon which we depend for our very existence. A sustainable circular economy that gives back to the earth instead of only taking from it.
Two minutes.
Creating the position of sustainability coordinator is one step along the path toward providing students with those tools. The students of today are the leaders of tomorrow, and they won't have an easy job. We, their elders, have gorged ourselves on a wonderful meal, and we're sticking them with the check. They're inheriting a planet that's losing Arctic sea ice, Antarctic ice caps, mountain glaciers, biodiversity, and gaining wildfires, floods, sea level rise, and extreme heat. It's only by creating a sustainable civilization that we can avoid the worst effects of climate change and biodiversity loss. You need to give them the tools to make a difference. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Beavis. All right. The next item on the agenda is FOIA's. We have four in the.
There are four FOIA's. We have a FOIA from Fage, Porter, Marsh, and Siebold, and the responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item is board committee reports. Do we have any board reports? Okay, hearing none. Then the next item is update on superintendent search, and I will do that. I'm going to read this, and this will be on the website tomorrow. I just want to start by saying Evanston is truly a great community, and thank you for staying Dream Team. Yes. You're in, yes. Yes. I just, I just have to say, the District 202 School Board asked the community to engage in the important process of selecting the next superintendent, and I feel, I feel as well as my colleagues that that response was tremendous. It has been extremely positive. In addition to the great response of the survey and the focus groups, students, families, staff, and community members provided questions to support panel interviews, we had several, volunteered to conduct panel interviews, and watched videos of the student and family community interviews and provided feedback through the survey, and that was really amazing. So the, so I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of the board to especially thank those who volunteered for the panel interviews. There were five groups. There were student groups, there was the family community members group, there was the ETHS non-teaching staff, and the ETHS teachers, and finally, the ETHS administrators, and they all conducted extensive and informative interviews. And in addition to the interviews, each panel also attended two pre-meetings to agree on the questions they would ask and to participate in an anti-bias training to support the interviews. So the board is extremely grateful to all who volunteered for these panel interviews. Their investment of time and their commitment to the continued success of ETHS says a great deal about these people and about our community as a whole. We feel like we got a wealth of information from all these interviews. We were able to review them all, and we received extensive community engagement, or through this extensive community engagement process, we received and we are continuing to review and analyze all the support and the information, which has been extremely valuable to us as we have these discussions. We will support their decision, and we will support the discussion as we go forward. In addition, this information will be of great interest to the next superintendent. I feel like the next superintendent has got, will get a jumpstart because of all this information. So, so, so that's it. I just really want to thank all who have engaged in this search process to date. The board values the input, and we, as a board, we're still talking. We hope to have an announcement by the end of the month, if not sooner. So thank you again to everybody who participated. Okay. So the next item is the student board report. Barbara.
So just to update you on student union's projects that I briefly mentioned last meeting.
Bye, Dream Team.
Oh, bye, guys. It's fine. So we've actually made a lot of progress in one month, so we're really proud of that. One of our curriculums, which I am in the P and Wellness curriculum, which we're trying to make P and Wellness curriculum more inclusive of gender and sexuality, we actually met with Mrs. Levitino to discuss that and kind of work together, and we realized that we're on the same page, which is great, and we're hoping to keep that connection moving forward. And she told us exactly what she needs from us, to work with us and to create like real change in that curriculum, so that's what we're working on now. And one of our other committees, who's working on mental health supports and strengthening the connection between students, social workers, and counselors, met with Dr. Kinsey and Mr. King, I think, last week to discuss that, and they also had a very productive meeting. They know exactly what they need to do to help the administration also take that project and move forward. We're hoping that we can get as much as we can done in the time we have left before the end of the school year, but I'm sure that these projects will be continued into the summer and into the next school year, and we're really excited on them and really, we're really surprised on how like connected we got to the administration, and we really appreciate how communicative and helpful they've been. Other than that, it's SAT week, so yeah. It's stressful. And then we have AP tests, but then we also have prom and graduation, so, you know, it's stressful but also exciting to see the year come to an end. But yeah, that's all for today. Thank you.
It's a very quick year, right? Thank you, Barbara. Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, I'll pick up on that SAT week, Barbara. So we're having two semi-normal days this week. They're, we've rotated the blue and the orange day, so each of those classes or blocks can meet on Monday and Tuesday, because Wednesday, the juniors are going to be taking the SAT, and the sophomores are going to be taking the PSAT. So that day, freshmen and seniors will not attend school. Then the following day, Thursday, any juniors needing extended time on the SAT will come in, but the majority of them will probably have wrapped up, or many of them at least. But then the freshmen will be coming in to take the PSAT eight slash nine. So we, this is assessment week. That's Wednesday, that's Thursday, and Friday is a non-attendance day. I've talked to several juniors this week because, you know, in a sense, there are a number of days that one class or another doesn't have to attend, and he said to me, "I think I'd rather be attending classes than have to take the SAT." But it's one of those things, and we're getting that taken care of this week. Kudos to our ETHS Academic Challenge team. We have five Wild Kits from the team who've qualified for the state finals. Also, congratulations to the ETHS Japan Bowl team. It finished first in the state and is heading to the national championship next month. So what accomplishments there in those areas. There are many upcoming events on the website. I'm not even going to try to start to point them all out, but we have a number of Family Action Network fan events coming up there, two just this week alone. Those are continuing to be Zoom events, which at least does make it easier for some families and some folks to attend, but you need to check that out. I want to put in a real plug for the ETHS Spring Musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dream Coat, which is going to run April 21st to the 24th, and tickets are on sale now. So I just want to stress that to the public, and we usually, because it's in the auditorium, we have a lot of space, so I won't say we sell out, but I will say that hundreds upon hundreds come to our spring musicals, and you'll really, it's a must-see. Our big band jazz showcase will be on Tuesday, April the 26th, and our, and we're having a family literacy night on Wednesday, the 27th. It's a free event, and it's celebrating the importance of literacy in the Evanston community, and we really want to lift, lift that up for so many other reasons. And my only other reminder is on Saturday, the 23rd, is Wild Kit Academy. I might add, though, that our seniors only have approximately one month of their high school career left. What a reminder. And so prom, graduation, all of that's going to start tumbling to a close really rapidly. And that does conclude my report.
Thank you. Tumbling one month. Okay, so the next item is our items for action. So the first item is the consent agenda, which includes approval of TIF agreement, sale of surplus property, which is the superintendent's vehicle, approval of change order number two, Bitterford roofing for power plant upper roof and lower east roof, approval of summer painting projects, approval of IHSA membership for the 2022-23 school year, approval of commercial athletic sponsorship, approval of minutes for March 14th, 2022 regular meeting, and March 14th, 2022 closed session meeting, approval of bills, treasurer's report from February 2022, personnel report, and approval of resolution granting tenure appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I just have a question. On the, for the item number 12A2 on the sale of surplus property, I just want to understand how our determination on the Kelley Blue Book value was made, and I'm wondering if somebody could walk me through that. As I understand it, there are multiple Kelley Blue Book values, and the one we've identified here is for the trade-in value rather than the sale of private property value.
So that's correct. Kelley Blue Book offers multiple potential values, and I'm the one who pulled those values. And I guess my thinking was, in general, when we have disposed of a car, we have traded it in, so that was the value that I picked. I think there's about a $2,500 difference in the two values. So if that were to be changed to the private party value, I think there'd probably have to be a change, and I don't know, the item would either be pulled and brought back or pulled and amended, so I'm not sure if that's what the board would like to do based on the private party or the trade-in value.
The reason it drew my attention, frankly, is because there's such a shortage of cars right now, and so it just, you know, it doesn't strike me.
I mean, honestly, it's a pretty high value either way, to be honest, more than I expected based on what we paid for it.
But that's kind of what the market's doing right now.
Because of the market, right.
I mean, there are no, there, you know, cars are difficult to find, so.
So it hadn't really occurred to me when I wrote up the item, but I do understand what you're saying. I'm just not sure how the board wants to proceed now.
I don't know either, but I have a little discomfort around that particular item, so I'd prefer that we just pull it off, and if others want to go ahead and vote on it, that's fine.
So what is the feeling of the board on that? Does anybody? So shall we just?
Did you say something, Molly?
I said vote. I don't know.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I don't have a problem with the number at all.
Yeah.
In fact, I thought it was kind of high, but I mean, I appreciate.
I mean, the values are a little high right now, whichever number you're looking at.
Yeah, no, I understand which.
So I don't remember the logistics of that piece, Lisa.
You want to pull that out and vote?
I can make a motion to amend and pull that out.
And then vote separately.
Yeah, so we can do that.
Okay.
So there's, so the amendment.
Sorry.
So Gretchen made an amendment to pull that item off and vote separately. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
And what do we?
Do we need to?
No, we can just vote on it. That's what we've done before.
Okay. So now we'll vote on the consent agenda without that item.
Right.
Okay, so, so then.
I think the original mover, whoever that was, can just amend their motion.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just, now we're voting on the consent agenda without that item.
Okay.
Andy? Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monzal?
Yes.
Arson?
Yes.
Rolitz?
Yes.
Terik?
Yes.
Davis.
Yes. Okay, so now we will vote on that item. It's the sale of surplus property of the superintendent's vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Upstayed.
Monzal?
Yes.
Arson?
Yes.
Rolitz?
Yes.
Terik?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so we are at item 13. Is there any old or new business that the board, board members would like to present? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we made it, well, we didn't quite make 10th of it. All right, thank you, everybody.